Let's start, we'll say the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, well we got Brian on the phone, the three of us here, John will be absent this evening, so we still have a quorum. Alright. And we'll have noises. Alright, uh, regular agenda, there wasn't any changes to this that I'm aware of unless... I didn't get on the last.
No changes.
Any additions?
I don't see any.
Okay, I'm gonna accept the motion for the regular agenda as it is.
Motion, motion approved.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Dave does a second, all in favor say aye.
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 It's unanimous, regular agenda.
Which one is the consent agenda again?
They're actually all those documents, so that's all, six of them. So A four, all of those are, are the consent agenda items to be reviewed and approved.
Yeah.
Okay, do we wanna ask?
So, when you do a consent agenda, you can approve the consent agenda and with that action, that approves all those items.
Right.
If you want to discuss any item, you could ask to pull that and put it onto the regular agenda. That's typically how consent would work, if you want to discuss them any further.
So, so I...
Go ahead, Brian. Nope, go ahead, Brian.
I had a question on the, the Tara Garden one, the A four, or is, I don't know, twenty eighteen dash three.
Okay. Go.
So, my question is, it looks like, the sum says ninety-nine percent complete, and maybe this is a question more for Jimmy, uh, ninety-nine seven percent complete, but it shows that the total cost of date is actually over the contract cost. Is, is this project actually running over, or are we still on budget with this?
Let me look. No, we're not, oh.
He's looking.
Cause it shows the total cost of date is twenty-five oh eight.
We're, we're over by, we're over by a little bit, not by much, just a deviation in construction and quantities. But it's not, it's not much. I can review it too, I guess I didn't see that right away. Hopefully my math is right.
So I guess, I, in a, in a case like this, where it is over, do we, is there any special approval that we need to go through? Or is that, is this, uh, just long as we, I, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve it, I'm just questioning what the process would be.
So, this overage is, is in a contingency then, Jimmy?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not, it's not over any amount that we've either potentially bonded or anything like that, it's just a contingency, okay.
So we're within the realm, it's just, we're just, we've eaten up a lot of our contingency with that change, or?
Some of it, yeah, some, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You have twenty percent of the total contract.
Right, I just don't know how much that we've taken now with this.
Very little.
Yeah. So, I think we're good there, Brian.
Okay.
Any others, Brian?
I guess the only other question, and I, I guess, uh, more for Breton on the pledge report.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, A four...
This one?
Yeah, the, it looks like both of the documents are the same, I didn't quite get the difference between the two.
They're very similar, I'm just trying to pull it up. Typically your pledge reports, what we get from the banks, I just forward it right on to you, it's reflecting the information in a different manner. One shows you the total amount pledged, so the one on the screen says how much is pledged for through Starion Bank. The other one shows those pledges to what banks have those dollars at, where those dollars at right now. So that's why, it's showing the same dollar amount, but showing what banks have that money in their accounts right now. And I couldn't get the, rotate for me, there you go. Uh, but yeah, that calls out, so it looks like Wells Fargo has all the different funds in their accounts for that. So that's what that's doing.
Yep.
Showing you more detail.
So, my second question then, so, looking at the other pledge report document Dave, uh, the first one you had open.
Yep.
This one, so, why does it list twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the FDIC insurance? Does that mean, essentially mean that four million is not insured? I, I don't quite understand that.
The FDIC is insured, that, that amount is insured through FDIC. And then, uh, uninsured, or the, the remaining amount, that's where the banks have to pledge securities for us. So they're basically insuring it themselves, or through other banks, they're insuring that money.
Okay, alright, so the idea is protected, it's just that protection's being provided by the bank itself?
Yep, yeah, and technically we're only required to...
Thank you.
We're only required to do this, you know, once, or twice a year, but anytime we get these reports, I feel it's just best just to forward it on to you so you see it right away.
Sure.
Instead of hoping we remember to do it that once or twice a year, so.
Okay, alright, thanks, thank you.
In the future, you'll be seeing this also from First Air National Bank, cause we have funds with First Air National Bank also.
Yep.
So you'll be seeing that for First Air National, probably in, uh, within the next month or two is my assumption, so.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on here guys, or else I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Dave made a motion, Chelsea does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, she carries, alright, minutes from last meeting. I didn't see anything in there, it was, I hope the most you guys saw something.
Bring him up real quick, but I don't think I did anything.
Do you see anything in there, Brian, that, uh, we missed?
No, no, I'm just taking a quick, quick look through it again, I haven't seen anything. No, I think it looks good, so make a motion approved.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go, approved. Sheriff's update.
Is that out here the sheriff's update, or is that, you know, to somebody or?
That's a twenty-nineteen oh nine, uh, six, A six.
A six, okay, that one right here? Alright, thank you, Brian. Go ahead.
There you go.
Alright, um, relatively quiet month last month compared to the last few, where calls were up around a hundred and sixty in there. Somewhere you have a hundred and twenty-four last month. Uh, let's read the paragraph, this month we experienced a hundred and twenty-four calls for service. This number includes ten call related to traffic complaints, as well as fifteen calls for deputies attempting warrants or civil papers. Um, I just put a little blurb in here about speeds on County Seventeen, it's actually very good overall, better than I thought they were with the ten mile an hour drops. Um, you know, there's a few speeders here and there, but it doesn't matter what the speed limit is, there's always be someone speeding on a road, so. Um, I would say, much better than my expectations were for the road. I figured people have a hard time getting used to being, going a little slower with those areas, they're doing pretty well. The only thing, the only call to note, I didn't put, it's not any statistics because it didn't originate here technically, but if you remember, Lindsay left the meeting last month and ended up making a traffic stop that made the news. Um, from a car that originated in town here, I can't get too specific on details, cause it's an active investigation, but, uh, it started with, uh, a gentleman that she believed had a warrant, and it turned into a pretty sizable drug bust, so. Very, great job, very well done on her part, uh, she was done with work, she didn't have to do that. She, she saw that car and she hunted it down, she did a really good job, so.
Cool, good.
That's great.
Nothing of note really, uh, in town that really went too haywire, it was a good month.
Okay.
So, question, question, uh, has there been any fender benders or crashes or anything, uh, in the roundabout area?
Uh, not a single one. No. Also to my surprise, so I'm not gonna lie, first time I went through there, when it wasn't signed, I had to take a second to think about what I was doing. There's more lanes than I'm used to, it turned into a whole thing.
Yeah.
Lucky I didn't crash my squad car through there, sheriff, you're welcome. See this? Yeah, no, and yeah, no major, I, we haven't had any traffic complaints related to the roundabout at all. People seem to be doing pretty well with it, so.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't gotten any emails or fan mail about it either, so, that's all good.
My only general, I guess I've been talking through Breton, but the lights aren't back on down there, and they've been off. I guess on and off for a number of weeks, so, but I didn't see yesterday if they were working.
Why, I don't know why. Because they're changing, they're changing the power lines.
I know, I understand, but that's not an acceptable, it's not an acceptable issue.
It has been.
It was lit the moment they opened it.
Yep.
I understand they put the additional lights for the road on it, and somebody's telling me their breaker's been hit popping or whatever, but for the safety of that brand-new roundabout, that's not an acceptable debate. I know rain's been an issue, but it needs to be off. I don't care about the lights going into town, it's, that's brand new, and if somebody gets hurt.
And, so everybody knows, we pass that on to the contractor in the county over the past three weeks, three, four weeks. Uh, and I'll pa, I'll be passing it on again to them tomorrow, uh, just saying, hey, it's still...
That needs to get done.
Yep.
Yeah, it's gone on long enough, no, I mean, I can see a little bit of time there, but we're done though, they gotta get it.
So that's, that's the one standing item related to the contractor for that, that we've been asking him over and over as well. And we've been asking him other things too, but this is the one.
Surprised there hasn't been some.
Yeah, and if there's, if we're supposed to get even a little bit of snow, it's a new area covered by snow.
Yeah.
Some lights would help, sure, but.
Yep.
It'll get fixed soon hopefully, so.
Okay. Bill, so otherwise, thank you sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, opening up for public comment, anybody got anything that they wanna say this evening? Going once, going twice, okay, move along, Southdale Farms, Matt.
So, this is the public hearing for Southdale Farms, first, and it says just first edition in the minutes, but we've broken it into a first and a second edition, so there's two separate applications. Uh, the developers here, and the developer can talk about the project. The document that should be titled...
Is this the one you want?
Uh, Southdale Farms update. That, uh, details the, um, there's a pretty lengthy list of conditions with this project. That details the length of conditions of this project with one exception, um, which is the extension of Sixty-Eighth Street. And, um, the developer has brought in, um, an updated plat that shows extension of Sixty-Eighth Street. Um, but as planning, the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council, the developer would, I think he wants to talk about that. But, that is a list of conditions that are required, um, from planning commission, recommended from planning commission or whatever, so.
Okay. Yep.
Uh, I'm, Chris Mack, um, the representative for, uh, the development, uh, New Horizon Homes. And, we did get a, um, recommendation to extend, um, Sixty-Eighth, um, Street South to connect to Seventy-Third. We've been working on this plat since January, um, of last year, or, and, uh, nothing, there has been, um, discussion of getting a thirty-foot additional right-of-way for Seventy-Third, but nothing of extending Sixty-Eighth down until the last, uh, planning commission meeting. And I guess, we've been working, uh, with, uh, the Matt and, uh, engineering on getting two exit points, and then also extending, uh, Sixty-Six up to Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Um, so, we are covered with, uh, uh, emergency vehicles and, and access. And we don't see the benefit of additional right-of-way going south, um, being we meet all the other requirements. Um, and if there is further development south, um, we did give up a full seventy-foot right-of-way on Seventy-Third for them, those vehicles to get up.
So, in your packet, it's called Southdale One. It was, I wanted the council to have the same document the planning commission evaluated for consistency purposes. Go down to the next page, here, this is the same plat that planning commission saw. And then Chris, you have the alternative.
Yep.
Can you share that with council please?
Yep.
So, here's the alternate, I guess. And, uh...
The difference is this, right?
Yep, and Lot One, that will be, um, attention upon, um, you know, and it's just an extra right-of-way that, I guess.
Did I hear the second one in here?
No, I didn't wanna give you something the planning commission didn't see.
Okay. So is this, right here where my mouse is pointing, is existing right-of-way or road, or what is that?
That will be access to that pond lot.
We had block length challenges in this development, and so the solution was to create pedestrian ways to the parks, to land and open space that could function like a park. You can look up, a block four and five had that, there's a pedestrian crossing in the middle of that block as well, satisfied blocking the lanes.
But that area, that, that thirty-foot is for, um, access for service.
To the pond, okay.
Yep. Yep, and then, um...
Yeah.
I think that, that other diagram, that ACAD file, that one actually shows where the ponds are, right? It's called A eight, A T one, ACAD?
Yep, it's the...
There's two ponds, there's Lot One and, I think it looks like Lot Forty-eight is a pond as well, right? That's where you got it?
Yep. Yep, it's, it's on the area plan.
So, it, it, it looks different, I, I guess my question is, why would you show two ponds in this area, but in the rest of the area, there's really essentially no ponds? Or is that just not planned where those ponds would be, or, I guess that's my question, why are those two ponds so close together?
Which one, Brian?
So, it's A, A eight, A T one. So, I...
Right there.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one.
It's lots one and forty-eight, right, Chris?
Yep.
That's the one that they're talking about, lots one and forty-eight of what's in front of you.
So if you scroll down, I mean, you'll notice on that top portion, that's a future phase, but there's essentially no, no plant, you know, shook plot in the plaque area or pond, where you look in the bottom, those two lots, Forty-eight and one, at the very bottom of this plaque, it shows two ponds.
You're looking at the master plan, Brian, and the plat is what we're focusing on right now.
So...
We're just looking at the concept.
Brian, I emailed you a picture of the handout they just handed us.
Okay, oh, okay, alright, thank you.
I guess if additional ponding needs, if we need it for the further development, we'll add them, I guess, as it's required. Working with engineering.
So Russ, what was your guys' conversation about this of planning and zoning then?
The, uh... The first edition, or you're talking about Sixty-Eighth Street coming down?
Talking of the street coming down here.
Okay. My guess is sometime in the future, we're gonna see that Sixty-Eighth Street come down, and it's gonna connect to Seventy-Sixth. It may end up going through my yard.
But what they're discussing or contention is the one that they, the change we've requested that comes south, right? It's in this...
What's it, yeah, down to Sixty-Sixth?
Well... No, no, the, no, what, the, the, what they're talking about...
Yeah, I know where they're talking, but you're...
Is going from Seventy-Third to Sixty-Eighth.
Yep.
We think it's short-sighted at this point, not to make that connection. We have, Seventy-Third is an existing city street, that'll, it'll have to be widened obviously, but it's an existing access to everything in there. And to pass that up now is just not right.
Okay. So what's planted right now for Seventy-Third is half of a typical city right-of-way, it's the forty feet. So, as part of what, what the developer's proposing is the other thirty would be dedicated on this plat. I guess the area where we're talking is the north-south connecting.
The north-south connecting through, through Lot Six.
Either way, seventy-Third will get a full city right-of-way width to the cemetery.
Yeah.
The contention is the north-south.
Yep.
Yeah, and I guess if, if we, if we're pushing traffic all the way, I mean, if you, on that area plan, you know, there are additional exit points on to Seventeen, but, you know, I guess, what we're saying is you have Seventy-Third, you know, I don't know...
You'll probably get one more, one more on the Seventeen at Sixty-Eighth.
No, and we are giving, um, a collector, um, on Sixty-Six for full access to Sixty-Fourth.
Looking for the collector.
And there we don't have any driveways backing into Sixty-Six, where we will have some on Sixty-Eighth, so. And, and it's not a hundred-foot right-of-way either, so, I guess.
No.
It's only a seventy, but, so that's kinda...
Okay. Do you have any, anybody on your board had any issues with this then, when you guys were talking about this, or was it pretty much? I was trying to get a gauge on where you guys, when you came up, got, got this far, was there any contention on this, or what?
Are you talking again, just about Sixty-Eighth?
Just, just that street, yep, Sixty-Eighth, that's all I'm looking at right now.
We all felt it was the thing to do.
Yeah.
The minutes reflect the, the request to extend Sixty-Eighth Street to Seventy-Third Avenue. Um, to add that to the listed conditions was approved unanimously.
Yeah, okay. And I can see what you, what you guys are getting at, that's why I just wanted to come up with clarification on that. Do you have something, Lucas, here?
Nope, that was it, I just wanted you to know that it was a condition from the planning commission.
Yep.
I guess, um, I can see where that needs to come in.
Yeah, I guess the, it's just hard because we don't have any layouts for the commercial side, so, I mean, you know, to not connect it and then end up maybe, you know, with issues or thinking that it would've, it should've been done.
I think that's what it's coming down to.
Yeah.
That, this is the time to do it.
The, the future, the future of, of what's gonna happen, I guess, you know, where, where those of us who live, live along there, you're gonna find that it's probably end up commercial at some point.
Yeah, if that connects all the way down to Seventy-Sixth, you know, that makes a lot of sense.
Eventually, I, I picture that happening. Now, those of us who live there aren't too crazy about the idea, but, but twenty years from now, uh, it's probably gonna be an issue.
How far back is that, where, if, if that were extended all the way down, where would that hit Seventy-Sixth?
Well, what it'll probably do is it'll probably come down, uh, straight down past the cemetery and then wind just a little bit to the east. But in any case, uh, that'd be about six hundred, uh, feet, five-hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred feet from County Road Seventeen.
To give you a comparison...
Are we even gonna let an inlet? Uh, it, it, you're stating it's gonna connect into something else, like the frontage road that's already there, so, okay.
If you...
I wanna make sure we're not adding another inlet into...
Lining up, it lines up perfect to Russ's neighbor, so the middle house, there's three houses on Seventy-Sixth, it's the middle house. That driveway lines up just almost dead on.
Just so you know, the, the corner lot down there is actually owned by a developer.
Yep, so, this is back to you, is you're losing a lot, but two of lots get bigger, is that correct, if we, if we go this direction?
Well, with that layout, um, we would, we'd just lose the one lot.
This lot here, or however it would arrange, but these two that are bordering would get a little bit bigger, correct?
Well, I think we'd still get three in there, they'd just get smaller, I think there's three in there right now.
Yep, there's three. But then, of course, the one on the quote, other side here would get a little bit bigger.
Yep, yeah, and it kind of at a weird angle, um, without realigning all of the other blocks and taking footage out of those, that was because of the, the twenty-foot, um, jog, you know. And I know, to get it through planning commission, we had to do the alternate, the larger lots.
Right.
Um, so, we didn't wanna lose additional twenty feet out of those blocks again.
Sure.
And then you have a twenty, I don't know what we'd do with that extra twenty feet on that right-of-way, if we were to just to come straight down.
Would, I mean, with Seventy-Second Avenue going in and then, you know, I see how that makes that corner a little bit, um, you know, less desirable from what your plan is. Does Seventy-Second need to go straight through, or can you just turn those lots and then you're...
Um, we do need to have Seventy-Second go all the way to, uh, Block Two, uh, or Block One, Lot Two. Discussed with, uh, Matt, um, for the future, um, access on those, uh, lots. And it has to remain seventy-foot right-of-way, so, I talked to him over the phone to maybe change that a little bit, but...
So what's the action you're looking for, what's the next step?
There has to be a public hearing first on this plat.
Okay.
That's the next step.
And that's what I have on the screen, that's what we're quote-unquote having a public hearing on?
Okay, so let's do that, let's open up, there's a public, so the public hearing on our preliminary plat here. Southdale Farms First Edition, if anybody's got any comments they wanna make on it? Okay, going once, going twice, okay, they'll close the public hearing on it. Did you guys have any other comments you wanna make on that? Sorry.
Would you like Matt to read off the conditions from the planning commission?
Yep. Well, I guess what's the next step is, well, let's just see what they, just so we...
Yeah, okay, okay, I just wanna, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so the planning commission adapted or adopted all the recommendations from staff plus the extension of Sixty-Eighth Street. The recommendations of staff from this include, um, it's, it's been edited in this plat, uh, the meets and bounds of Block Four, Lot Fourteen becomes right-of-way, that's the cutout between four and five now in the plat in front of you. That happened. Um, submitted a landscape plan, which shows boulevard trees and upgraded standards intended by the developer. This is no different than what we've required in African Maple Lakes. Construct improvements, uh, city standard, all of them rights-of-way as indicated on the plat. Uh, a copy of the approach permit from Cass County. And the rest of it's pretty standard, go, make sure that there's a meeting with the fire department, ensure meeting with the sports parks board, um, intend to serve letter from Casserole Water, which we already have. Uh, so the developer has begun chipping away at the conditions of the approval, they had an issue with one of them, which is why this came up, so.
So...
Provided the alternates, you could see, I mean, there, I mean, we are willing, but we wanted to make the case on why we didn't want them.
Oh, I understand that too.
Keep it the, keep it the way it was, and it just, like you say, it was just brought up, we've been working on it since January and it just got brought up last meeting.
I understand, I know that's happened, but that happens sometimes, I'm aware of that too. But, I mean, I can see too for future, like we're planning zoning, folks are talking about too. This is the, this is the time to do that, so we have continuity going down that road. And I'm inclined to go putting that road in, so we're talking about Sixty-Eighth there.
Yeah, cause it, it, you do kinda get stuck down here if that doesn't go through, you know, looking at the master plan, um...
Well, the other thing, uh... The land right on, on County Road Seventeen, we'll talk about that when we get to zoning, that's gonna be, uh, R five.
Right, I know, we talked about that, so.
Okay, again, uh... Another way out.
You mean, Seventy-Third gives us another way out, you're talking?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You're not adding another way, you're saying that gives us another option to go?
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think as far as the frustration goes, I think, you know, Matt is doing a good job getting everything to a point where you're not having to go back to the drawing board so many times, or, you know, big changes, in a sense it is, it's fairly minor.
So, now the, the next question is, when that gets improved, uh, I mean, so Seventy-Third, that would be when, when the, the south gets developed, or, I mean, that's something we'll have to go through too as we go to work's final plat, and... You know, I understand you'll get the right-of-way... You know, I understand you'll get the right-of-way, but as far as improvements, you know, we would not wanna do that with this plat, you know? Do the Seventy-third improvements and the Sixty-eighth improvements at this time, but...
Do you wanna put them up, the future of what you're thinking?
Yeah, until you get some...
Something to pay for it?
Some hoses to pay for it, exactly. Yeah, because Seventy-third is touching public pond and, and the property to the south is not developed, it's just a one-house. And I don't know what their future plans are for development, but there, there's no right-of-way through there right now, but...
But I think I'll let that get hashed out with you guys, I don't know, that's not really our...
That's not our intention, right, is to suddenly build this road up going out, we just want for future capabilities.
I believe the commission's intention is they wanna secure that right-of-way.
Right, that's the goal, not to add it right now.
Yeah, but that's what, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna...
No, I'm...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this, Matt, to, I mean, any other conversation gonna take place on this, or this is...
I thought the conversation needed to take place is that planning commission's listed recommend, the developer challenged when the list of recommendations.
Yes, and I'm just... You need a motion to basically secure those, is that what you want?
You could approve the preliminary plat, the way that I understand it is, when you approve the preliminary plat, you're approving this preliminary plat, then with the changes requested, yeah. The list of recommendations by the planning commission. And planning commission...
As recommended.
Yeah, what they've recommended, they've taken on staff recommendations plus the extension of Sixty-eighth Street.
Got it.
All of that information has been communicated to the developer, right, because he's brought that up, okay?
You got it, you need, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I make a motion that we accept preliminary plat with the recommended changes by the planning commission.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, you get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All right.
Brian, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, good, just checking.
Technology and all. All right. So, Dave made a motion, Chelsea did a second, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes and is approved, that's the preliminary plat one, you mentioned about a two.
There is a two, so in the packet there? Just wanted to rezone for this one first. You wanna take that?
No.
Okay, do, so we have two choices, we can do the rezone for the, we can approve the rezone that was done by planning commission, and then we'll have to amend it, because just some of the numbers changed and the alternative doesn't work. Okay, so we'll do the rezone, we'll do that.
Before we do the preliminary plat two, right?
That's what he wants to do.
Okay.
Just get Southdale Farms First done with, then move to Second.
All right, so this'll be rezone for, basically preliminary plat one area.
Yep, so I, I'll read to you what, you know, what the rezones are, based on the numbers there. Okay, so, Block, Lot Two, Lot One, Block One, Forty-sixth and Forty-eight would be rezoned to public facilities. Lot One, Block One, Lot Two in the front would be rezoned to R-five. Then everything else is R-six. That includes Block One, Lot Forty-seven, to the west, to the east, I'm sorry, and then all those small ones.
Okay, repeat that one more time, so...
Block, Block One, Lots One, Forty-sixth and Forty-eight.
Yep.
Okay, those would be rezoned to public facilities.
So it's this one's over these?
This one, and that one?
Correct.
Okay.
Lot, sorry, Block One, Lot Two is R-five.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And everything else, so the Lot One, Block One, Lots Three through Forty-five and Forty-seven are R-six, and then Lots Two, Three, Four, and Five. R-six, correct.
Matt, what is R-five again?
R-five is the multifamily zoning.
Okay, so that, that isn't set aside for commercial or anything like that, it's set aside for either multifamily buildings?
The developer's intent, based on this request, is to develop some type of multifamily in that lot.
Did you catch that, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, that doesn't match with the future land use map?
This application predated the future land use map, and any iterations of the future land use map that the city has adopted, this fits. So, in terms of fighting it from a, if you disagree with it and chose to fight it from a future land use map standpoint, probably wouldn't stick in my opinion.
Yeah, because this was done under, we don't, we don't have that thing updated yet. All right, so for that rezone, I'll open up for a public hearing, if anybody's got anything that they wanna say about the rezone that we're talking about. Going once, going twice, okay, I will close the public hearing on that. Go ahead, Brian.
I was just thinking, if, there, you listed off quite a few spots where we're listing from Zone X to Zone Y. I mean, you have that, this is in a separate document, or, I mean, just the items you listed off were the only ones that are being rezoned, correct?
Correct, those are the, you're correct, those on this plat are the only, yeah, the only proper parts of property being redrawn.
And right now, because the planning and the land use map, this was prepared, the land use map was ready, is that what you said?
Right, so, under the new future land use map, there could be additional discussion had with the developer, but under all the old guidance documents that we have, which this plat is subject to, not some of the newer ones we've adopted, this is compliant.
That's what I mean, it, it's essentially to the old land use map, not the new one.
Correct.
But any of the future phases will go to the new?
That's correct.
But, but I guess, is this, what was the land use map planned for this area, the new one?
I believe Block One, Lot Two had a commercial designation on it, in the new future land use map. In the old one, it doesn't, well, it depends on which old one, because there wasn't good record of what was adopted. So, Brent Moore, contract planner, and I looked at a couple different options, and there wasn't anything clear that we could say yes or no to, so, we deferred to other documents.
Okay.
In terms of multifamily from a planning standpoint, in that location, it's not a bad location, compared to...
It's minimal, I mean, in the grand scheme, but I think, yeah, moving forward, obviously, we need to make sure that's enforced.
Yeah.
Yep, once we get it, once we get it all square and we had approved, definitely. Russ, you got any comments on any of this? I didn't really think so, but I'm gonna ask anyway, just to be nice.
No.
There you go.
You took care of it all.
Okay. All right, you guys got anything else, otherwise I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the rezone on plat one.
So...
Chelsea's made a motion.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, Dave second it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, rezone is approved, all right, so now you wanna go back to...
We're doing the second edition now. Which is the Southdale Farms Two. So this is the rest of the property going north, so this sits due north of what was just preliminarily approved. That's the same Sixty-eighth Street, if you look at the master plan, that's the Sixty-eighth Street drawn that extends from Seventy-sixth Avenue, Sixty-four...
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, sorry. At one point it was Sixty-eight. From... So that's the long road, there.
Which one?
This. Could ride there, right?
One more.
Over.
You mean go up?
To the, to the east, to the east. That's the west.
Sorry.
Right there, yep.
So we're looking at these?
Yep, so on this master plan, you're looking at those two large lots and the rest of the right-of-way for Sixty-sixth Street. That's what that is.
And just the right-of-way.
This is the lot that the developer intends to hold for the new elementary school.
Okay.
As part of the school bond approval. The developer has chosen to present it like this, with parkland and two lots, one designated on the plat here as parkland and another one as public facilities. Planning commission approves this with the condition that there's a letter from the school endorsing this, with this letter we have. And the rezone would be to rezone Block One to public facilities.
Okay. So you got the approval in the letter from the school in hand there, okay. Russ, anything? I think this is pretty much walk in the park, we kinda talked about this, so...
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be a perfect, a perfect street for it to be on.
Correct. Correct. So, um, gotta do a public hearing on this one, too, right? So, let's open that up to the public hearing on the preliminary plat two here that we've got in front of us.
Is this preliminary plat or just a rezone?
This would be for the preliminary plat, the rezone comes next.
Yep. Well, can I ask a question, why does a preliminary plat come before a rezone? Just for this process, because it seems backwards.
You have to have the lots.
Because, because we were not going to give any rezones until we had a plat that we would accept. So, we, we're reversing the order that you've normally seen them in, in that we, we approve the plat before we will ever approve the rezone anymore.
Okay.
We consulted with Brent Moore and with some pure planners around here, and they do both, depending on the situation, yep.
You're saying this is the way we're gonna lay it out, but it's not even zoned that way, so that's why it just seems backwards, but thank you, Russ, for explaining.
You had to be a reason for it, right?
Well, that's why I asked, I just wanna make sure.
A new subdivision, you have to have the lots to be able to plat, or platted to rezone, that's the short answer.
We've always done it backwards before.
I... Just stating, you're, you're saying I'm putting down flats on an agricultural area?
Yep.
Until we rezone it, that is backwards to me, okay, I think to most people, but based on what your explanation is, if you want the intent.
Makes sense.
You want the intent of what they're gonna do before I allow you to rezone it, that makes sense.
Okay, so now we're good?
Yep.
All right. Okay, so, any other questions on this, otherwise I wanna entertain a motion to accept the preliminary plat for two.
Did you close the public hearing?
No, we did not. Get on, we'll have a public hearing.
No, you opened it, you didn't close it.
They closed it.
And then I interrupted you, so...
Yeah. Put my train of thought in. Okay, being there wasn't any of those, we'll close the public hearing. And then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea does a motion, can I get a second?
Second, second.
Okay, Brian does a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion approves, all right, then we go on to the rezone. Preliminary of the plat two here, the second edition.
Yeah, do a public hearing for that.
Yeah, we'll just open up for a public hearing on that, for any comments or questions on the rezone. Okay, going once, going twice, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions on this one, I think this is pretty much done. No going on here, so, I'll entertain a motion to accept the rezone.
So moved.
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry there, Brian, Chelsea got a second. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, that is approved. Okay, you're done now, gentlemen?
That's good, hopefully tomorrow, in that alternative plat, we'll talk about it, and we'll get it lined up.
Mr. Mayor, I have a request, because the next on the list is the special assessments.
Yep.
And the first one on the list is my development, and I know there's a citizen here that would like to speak about it, but there's something that's coming next on item twelve that I think answers some questions that probably a couple of our citizens have.
Okay.
Can we move that up first? And then do this, move twelve up ahead of nine, and then go into nine?
If you think it'll be useful, I have a problem with that. Jimmy's all right. Okay, we'll move that then, we'll move number twelve up in front of nine. Yep. And we'll bring that up first, so when Jim gets done talking there, we'll bring him on board. So...
I'll let Jim kick it off, he's ready. They're gonna do twelve.
We'll do twelve before nine, Jim, just so we can get that out there as to what, what went on here.
Okay, so we'll just read my name. So the initial design and construction included cleaning out the existing ditch swales, sediment and proper grading and drainage, and debris. After construction, due to excessive rain and excessive sump pump discharge to backyard swales, the backyard's never dried out. The excessive, excessive moisture in the ditch has made maintenance and turf establishment difficult. The contractor requested alternatives to final sweeting, seeding the open ditch, because he felt the swale will always hold water and have constant maintenance. The contractor's proposed installing a pipe, the length of the backyard swale uncovering of the topsoil berm, grading each lot, to have an inlet pipe on the lot lines. Let's see, the city bond is for three hundred and five thousand dollars to complete this project, that amount is already being assessed to the benefiting properties. I project the, project the project cost to be approximately two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, leaving approximately nineteen thousand four hundred dollars of bond money left. The change order provided by the contractor was for twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, exceeding the bond amount by a little over ten thousand dollars. So, the purpose of this change order would be to try to get those backyards a little bit more maintainable. There'd be a berm in the middle where there's a, where there is a swale at the moment, and that berm inside of that would be an eighteen-inch pipe, an eighteen-inch pipe coming out along the property lines. And each great lot would be graded along the berm down to those, down to those inlets along the way, so, that's the gist of it, in a short period, so...
So the difference is, is it's over by ten thousand dollars, correct, Brent?
Yep, and my suggestion would be, we have the sales tax fund for infrastructure, it shows public we're doing things with it, so, I would suggest we just take that ten thousand from the sales tax. We could take it from the, well, it'd be harder to take from the highway fund, but I think the sales tax would be the most appropriate.
But the sales tax fund is for...
It's for doing improvements, it isn't just big projects, you know, we have to do some small projects, too, and kind of, it's just helping a little bit out on this, but makes it a lot easier, just cleaner to do as part of the sales tax bond, so... And our balance is, I wanna say, I don't have the sheet right in front of me, but it was...
It's up there.
It's up there, we, there's plenty of money for that, so...
Yeah, it won't be that big a deal.
Yeah.
So, Jim, is there gonna be any other, we, this thing done, is there gonna be any other issues that come up that you...
I, I don't foresee them, I talked to the contractor, told him we got a tight budget on this, so we can't, we gotta watch it pretty close. The, two hundred and eighty-six thousand is what I projected it to be, based on what I think the final quantities will be, and then the final engineering and admin and all the
Right.
other costs that we put onto it, so, this is approximate, but this is what I, I feel pretty comfortable with this, at least going forward, so...
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I'd hate to have to have another conversation three months for a hundred and thirty K, you know, so...
I think the thing to note is that the three oh five has already been assessed, and it's gonna be assessed, so this only, this isn't increasing the assessment any, from what it is.
It, it was a little hard to hear, but is that just for, for drainage in that area?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And it's to fill in an area that today is just wet and it's just, the water's just standing there instead of draining?
Correct, there's an excessive amount of sump pumps that drain into that, and then with the constant rain we've been getting, that ditch is not dry, it's growing cattails, maintenance is becoming an issue, so...
Right.
So they put, put a pipe in and then put dirt over top of it that can be seeded, that us as homeowners can mow and those types of things, so we can stop the constant wetness.
So, well, the question is, is this dirted by, were residents okay with this, or is this requested by residents, or how did, how did this come up?
It was discussion based on we need to finish the project, and I discussed with the engineer and contractor as options, this was an option that was approached, and... This was an option that was approached and this is something that we've come up, we feel is the best option, um, but the difference in the money is which would not be assessed to the residents.
Okay, so this, this would be one portion that wouldn't be assessed. The rest of the original project would still be assessed?
Correct. The overage is the only portion. We're actually running a little, a little lower than the total assessed value, so this is only the difference.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Anything else?
I guess I'm, I see we're gonna do the, so.
I'm not.
I mean, it makes sense to, I mean, water is standing in any areas, that's a problem, so if we're resolving some of the issues and the residents are asking for it, you know, they're, they're not opposed to it, you know, then I'm okay, but that's my big question is as long as there's enough support from residents that granted, they, they're gonna have to pay for it, but again, we're allocating public funds to, to use, to direct to a single development. Right?
Yeah, but it's to finish off what we've been working on here, is right, Jim?
Oh, I agree, I agree. I, no issues there, it's just, you know.
Yep, I know. But it needs to get squared away too. We can't have it sitting there like that, so.
Agreed.
All right, so anybody's got anything else? I'm gonna entertain a motion to, uh, accept that change order number three with putting in the other ten thousand dollars. I don't know, is that included in here, guys?
Same.
Ten thousand from the sales tax?
Approximately, or remaining balance to be from the sales tax. I'd leave it open, our anticipated estimate is that, but just leave it open for.
Okay.
Now we have four hundred and twelve for.
This ten thousand dollars would come out of the property tax or the, not, not property tax, but, but sales tax fund?
Sales tax fund, correct.
Okay, all right. No, I'll make, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Brian makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Well, would you, we need a roll call?
Ken? Dave's out, so you?
Yes, you should spend your money.
Yes.
Okay, Chelsea?
Yes.
All right. And David Steen, so. All right. We're good. Okay, so we're gonna move up to, okay, well now we'll go back to the special assessment list, so Lucas, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, tonight we are having a meeting to confirm assessment lists that the special, uh, assessment commission has already confirmed. So we have three projects tonight. Street Improvement District twenty seventeen dash seven, Street Improvement District twenty seventeen dash eight, and Water Sewer, uh, Storm and Street Improvement Districts twenty eighteen dash three, uh, which is Terra Gardens. So the first one, um, that we have is Street Improvement District twenty seventeen dash seven. And what you're doing at this meeting, um, is you're hearing any appeals to assessments from, uh, property owners, um, that were in the district. Uh, and just to provide a little background, the special assessment commission met on July twenty-fifth to, uh, originally create these assessment lists. Um, and then the special assessment commission published a notice in the paper saying that the list has been created, uh, and then you can come to the special assessment commission meeting and then object, uh, to the assessments. So they had their objection hearing, um, on August twenty-first and at that meeting is when they then confirmed their list. Then it gets published in the paper again for tonight's meeting. So that's where we are right now. For this first project, uh, there were no appeals filed with the city auditor. That's the process that, that is taken. And I guess I should say that the city also sent out letters for this meeting for tonight to property owners and the two street improvement districts. We didn't send a letter to Terra Gardens because nobody lives there, so it didn't make any sense. So letters were sent to the property owners in the first two street improvement districts for tonight's, um, meeting, letting them know that they could come here and appeal their assessment too as well. So that's where we're at tonight. So for, for twenty seventeen dash seven, I guess Jim can explain the project and, um, the amount that was assessed to the properties and I have a list too in case you haven't looked at it yet.
Twenty seventeen dash seven Maple Grove was the addition of concrete valley gutters at the low spots in the, in the, uh, existing street where they were currently asphalt. They're deteriorating and in poor condition. Cleaning out of those ditches to the center of, the center area where the drainage runs and cleaning out the, uh, existing stormwater pond, adding a fountain and then chip sealing the entire pavement, new signage and, uh, incidental work. So that was, that was that one. The amount, Lucas says that, was, it was broken down by the individual each unit, so everybody got the same assessment, all the lots did, including the Park District. Uh, the amount is eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-nine cents for all.
Yeah, it looks like it's pretty much equal for everybody, right?
Thirty-five, thirty-five lots sold.
Anything else, Jim?
Uh, not, not on that one, no.
Okay, then I will open up the public hearing on, uh, for the special assessment list for the Maple Grove project. Anybody got any comments they wanna make on that?
Yep, you can come up to the podium.
Yeah, except, I mean, I don't say anything. I just want to see what the deal was.
I think that, you, you're, you're, uh, no, 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 I don't have your email for me, but, uh, you're more or less concerned with the quality.
Stop words, so he's kind of behind me, so not Brian. Brian was not able to make it, so.
Oh, remind them, I won't address something.
But I think we should bring up that one of our, one of our residents did have some questions in related to, cause he is backing up to that ditch that's having the problem and, um, requested, uh, how are we gonna finish it up, that type of thing. That's why I wanted to bring up this change order at a time. So I requested that the city administrator contact him after this meeting to look and know all the details of everything, so.
And what I was, to address that, I was just gonna say, you know, it isn't complete yet. We haven't accepted the project. This is just in order to get the funding mechanism done on that and we have to do the special assessments.
Correct, okay.
And there is still outstanding retainerage that's been held until the, that has not been paid to the contractor that is not fully done, most of the things.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing on it. Okay? At this point, I guess, uh, if there's no other questions, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the, uh, special assessment list for the Maple Grove project.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion.
Want a clarification? Want a clarification? I can vote on this because I'm assisting it to myself, is that a problem?
No, you're, you're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Well, it'd be a different thing if your lot was happened to get it more right, right?
Right.
So. It's the same as everyone else, so you're good.
Yep. Okay, Chelsea made a motion, get a second.
I didn't say it.
Got it, okay, Brian does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes unanimously. Move along to the Northwood-Southwood one. Lucas?
Yes, so same song and dance, um, for the next one. This one is Street Improvement District twenty seventeen dash eight. For this one, actually, there were, uh, there was an appeal to this project, so we can discuss that, um, once I hand this list out and just, you know, the governing body hears any of these, uh, appeals or objections and you can, uh, change the assessment list. If you do see that something doesn't make sense or that, that the assessment maybe was too high or that it shouldn't have been assessed at all, the, the city council has the authority tonight to change the list and then, uh, we'll modify it and then that'll be the list that then gets submitted to the county. So Jim can explain this project.
Street Improvement District number two thousand seventeen dash eight was a mill and overlay of Northwood and Southwood Drive. Water main gate valves are also replaced due to some deteriorating valves and are replacing them for operation. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, mill and overlay and the chip seal on top of that, so.
What was the total value of this project again?
It is.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
And then how did the?
The special assessment commission decided that this was another one they broke out by the each.
Okay.
So if you have a, a lot that was abutting and it was in each assessment, everyone was assessed four thousand ninety-eight dollars, thirty-eight cents. I take that back, rounding or, rounding four thousand ninety-eight dollars, thirty-six to thirty-eight cents, there's a couple here of two cents.
And I guess I didn't ask this in the last one, what's the term on these on specials? What are we doing this for?
Uh, I believe twenty years.
Twenty years, okay.
I think that's what I recall too, it was just twenty years on this one, but. So should you guys want me to read the letter that we got or?
I think we should, he's here.
If you'd like to.
Darren, I'm sorry to miss, I'll open up for public hearing, so go ahead. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you were in the audience, so I was just gonna, pick it up, so yeah.
I could read what I wrote.
That's pretty much what I was gonna do, but go ahead.
My property access is on Most Way at the east side of my property. I do not have any access to north side of my property that is on Southwood Drive as it is very steep drainage ditch. We use Most Way for access to our property. I do not believe I gain any benefit from the work that has been done or do I believe I'm responsible for any portion of the project. What I have noticed is the drainage ditch to my north of my property now holds more water longer than any other time since I've been on the property. I've included a few pictures of the north side of my property along Southwood Drive.
Okay, anything else you wanna?
Well, um, he did mention, uh, what the purpose of the project was to remove, uh, was to clean out the ditches and.
Not on this one. That was on Maple Grove.
It was.
Yeah, this didn't have any, any, uh, dirt work on it, this was.
On the letter I got, twenty seventeen dash eight, you received this letter, notice of your opportunity to object to assessment of your, of a property as it relates to your street improvement district number twenty seventeen dash eight, the project.
Apparently the city.
We'll blame the city attorney for having the wrong work in there.
That was, there was no drainage work done on that project. It was mere, it was a mill and overlay and replacement of gate valve, water main gate valves.
Okay.
That was, uh.
Should we have to have a talk to our attorney here?
That's on me.
So.
So it has nothing to do with that at all, it's just with the water main?
The gate valve's on the water main, that's the only bit that it's.
And that serves my property.
It serves the entire area you live in, its operation of the water main system throughout your area. It was the corner of Moss, uh, Cheyenne and, uh, Southwood, Liberty, Southwood, it's Northwood, Southwood, those were the areas of the wa- gate valve.
So everybody in Liberty's getting assessed the same amount?
No.
Not, not in Liberty, this, these are the abutting properties. So everyone, Northwood, Southwood, Southwind, those properties.
Yeah, I, I think the assessment's pretty high for one property where, you know, I'm on Most Way, I'm part of Arrowood, right?
And that's something that you can petition to these guys is that.
Well, I mean, we talked about, yeah, we talked about this, that you probably are not, I mean, you don't have access to Southwood too. I think your property got included in this because of the way you looked at.
He, yeah.
Things initially, so.
One side of his property abuts.
Right, but I mean, he's not gonna get any benefit from.
It's unusable.
Yeah.
Property.
That's what I mean, when we looked at this after the fact, I mean, we were looking, obviously, you know, but we looked at it after the fact, I didn't see any, I mean, I'm talking to Jimmy too.
Is there any other properties like this that would have potentially got?
I think this was the only one, the way.
I think this is the only one.
Just because of where this property's at, it just got tagged onto this thing.
Do you know which lot and, lot and block you are by chance?
I couldn't find any material on it, I had such a short time. Thank you for the letter, by the way.
It will work on that problem.
Especially the time, I was late. Says six twenty-five here.
That I can't control, no.
I guess, I mean, this is something we have to then create a motion and that type of stuff when we accept.
What, what you could do is, you could approve the list with the removal of that one property. And then it's recalculated out, so you approve it based on recalculated amount, uh, you probably add a couple hundred dollars to each one ballpark.
Yep. That's why I would just wonder if there's other lots that, just about like this, that, if there's one or two that got affected.
I think when we were looking at the maps, this is just the one, his property is just that sweet spot. Poor way to put it, but it was a sweet spot, so his stuff would get included, even though he has a benefit from getting on the road.
Got it.
So, unless I'm wrong, Jim, I know when we looked at that earlier. I mean, I'm, I would say on this one that we could approve the special assessment list minus his property because I don't know if that's right.
I agree.
I agree. So we need to close the, and I guess, continue the public hearing, sorry.
Does she got any other comments you wanna make on it?
None, thank you.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for writing a letter too, appreciate that, cause it's just, that's how we become aware of this stuff, you know? We're gonna miss a few things, that's why, good for the feedback. So any other questions, you guys? Anybody? Otherwise, I'd say, but.
I motion that we approve the list minus this gentleman's lot and then it is recalculated based on that.
Lucas, you will double check that, correct?
So it's lots nine and ten, lot three in the east half of lot eight.
Caption. All right. Do we have a motion on that? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so Chelsea does a second. All right, so we'll roll call this one, I think, just to be safe.
You didn't do the last one, so I'll just do a regular motion.
That's true, yeah, we're not, yeah, all right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, keep me out of this. Motion passes, so. All right, on to the third one here. Terra Gardens.
Mr. Mayor, the third one, uh, Terra Gardens, the developer pushed this list or, uh, came up with this list. The special assessment commission, um, had no issues with the city, engineered, didn't have any issues with it, I didn't. So it's, it's gonna look different because it's not going to be in each. These are all individual lots, they're different sizes, they, there's streets involved with this.
There's regional components involved with this, there's some regionalization of the sewer and that, so.
Right.
Uh, this project consisted of the construction of the sanitary sewer, the services, water main services, storm sewer, inlets, catch basin, stormwater pond, flip station, pump station, site grading, street lights, asphalt.
You're doing that, I thought you were looking at a sheet of paper, Jim. I am impressed.
Yeah, I've seen it a couple times, so, um, it's, it's all the Terra Gardens first.
Okay.
And the, just to clarify, the developer put forth these dollar figures.
The developer proposed those, we reviewed them and went over them with the special assessment commission and they didn't have any acceptance at all, so. You'll see there's a lot.
So is lot, lot five or block five, lot five, that, that one was seven twenty-one, is that a future development lot?
That is the PUD if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it is.
Ah, okay, okay, yep, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, any other, otherwise I suppose I gotta open up a public hearing on the Terra Gardens. Okay, any other, otherwise I suppose I gotta open up a public hearing on the Terra Gardens. If anybody's got anything else to say about Terra Gardens uh special assessment list? Going once, going twice. Alright, we'll close the public hearing on Terra Gardens. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'm gonna accept a motion for uh accepting the special assessment list for the, for Terra Gardens.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea gives a motion. Can I get a second?
Say it.
Okay, Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Alright, on to number ten.
Number ten is a second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seven. Uh, this ordinance makes three changes to the land development code, title seventeen. These are revised ordinances. Uh, it rewrites the PUD ordinance, and it adds some additional language to our parking ordinance to add additional flexibility, and it urbanizes our block lane ordinance and cleans up um language issues, I think, within the block lane ordinance.
Yeah, and we've talked about this one before, so.
Are there any changes since the last reading?
No.
Yeah, so. I guess unless you guys have got any other questions or anything, I'm just gonna maintain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Dave does a motion, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we got that done though. Matt, we can get that squared away in the books. Alright, Jim, you got number eleven.
Yeah. Uh, prior to the construction and design of Lakeview Drive seventy-ninth and sixty-third, we met with the adjacent landowners on a potential use for the adjacent lots and the uh connections required for such. Um, we did add a couple in, into the plans. I think that now their uh idea of what's gonna be in these large lots is a little bit more uh maybe solidified, or you guys have maybe have a better idea of what you're gonna put in there, Chris, or maybe you've looked at it a little closer than the first time that we met, so. Um, the, the adjacent property owner has requested a couple, he has requested three six-inch sanitary sewer services be added to the project at a location, I don't know if you've got a photograph of that memo on, uh, Brett and I, my printer didn't print it, I forgot to scale it. And at locations on Lakeview Drive. The problem is that sewer main's already been in, so this is a change order to that. We do have a price to do the two nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars breakdown by the contractor, KPH. Um, I'm not sure. Brett, did you put that on sharepoint at all?
I believe I did, well, I'll double check here. Should be.
I don't see anything, if you guys see something.
Should be a change order number one for twenty nineteen dash one, Lakeview.
The gentleman, hold on, is that an open folder? I don't see that one.
I don't see it either.
No, see, no, I can find it, I'll get it here.
I, I guess, I mean, you pretty well described it.
He described it, so.
Yeah, who, where's the cost gonna go to then?
Well, right now, the cost is gonna be just added into the project in special assess. We could keep that separate and assess it back to the.
Well, wait a second, is this a lot that's already in the, like, a concrete development?
It's a large lot, multiple opportunities for development in it.
This is the lot outside of the school.
This is north of the, this is north of the, of the uh church.
North of the church there.
Whole area in east, west of Lakeview Drive.
Which is the school.
Hey, Brian, it's.
The challenge is, aren't we gonna provide water or sewer services to that whole area, not just this one lot?
We are adding a couple, we've already.
Do it, it's just a one lot instead of doing the area.
We've added two already, and they're requesting another three due to, Chris is here, he can, he can talk about it a little bit more, but we did consult with the.
Hey, Brandon, your answer, your question will be answered here shortly. Go ahead, Chris.
I don't, I didn't know that this was gonna be on this, I just seen it, so I figured I'd stay. Um, but uh, it's a forty acre lot, and the services we do have, believe, there was one service um north of where the school, where the road, I don't know what, what road that is, but uh.
It's the service road?
Oh yeah, the service road now. Um, there's one service there, and then a service um right at that uh T, and then there's another one just north of the uh church. Um, and then that's all we have right now, and there's a large corner that, I think it's still like ten acres that don't, we don't have any services, so somehow we'd have to reroute the services through the two other ones that are quite a ways away to provide service to those other lots.
Okay, so, so this is a proximity thing is what we're getting down to?
Yeah, and I guess by the time we could do it, and I guess we haven't looked at, you know, developer covering it yet. Um, here's the first time I've seen numbers, but uh I think if we were to uh do that, it'd be cheaper just to have it done with this project now than run six hundred feet of.
Right, well, being we're there.
Yeah, being you're already there, so.
And I think that's kinda what we talked about, being we're there now, we could just.
Yeah, when we originally met with the developer representative at the time, plan preparation, I don't think there was a real good idea of what was gonna be put in those spots, so we put it at the beginning of the end of the bill.
What you knew.
And then um when Chris started looking at it some more and laying some stuff on it, it was, parents in their mind, they needed a couple more, so. Yeah, and they weren't, right now they're not set on anything planned, but um I've done a lot of developments and other representative hadn't done as many and for sanitary, if we put them in and we don't use them, that's, they don't get used, but it's easier to have them now than need them later. Yeah, this, this is um gonna be a robust concrete road when we're done, so just digging into that and tying on once it's been paved, it's not recommended at all, so um would've been nice to have it a month ago, but we only, we take information when we get the information, so.
Correct.
Now, Jim, this covers everything all along Lakeview, north-south also. Okay, so we're covered, yeah. I just make double checking, cause.
So that whole area, all the way up to seventy-six, will now have adequate lines for service that.
Based on everything that has been indicated to us, so.
So you, just to clarify, you stated this cost is for three additional, so.
For two, they requested three, but the first one is really close, if we could find them, it's on.
It's okay, I, I.
But there's, they requested one that was very close to the first one, so we prefer to work with the developer and routing some stuff to that one versus adding another one fairly close to it, so. And the other two are down, are down closer to the uh um, I wanna say, maybe like the quarter, the fourth points, maybe, is that kinda where we put them?
So now this would create a total of how many points on this wall?
Two, three, four, five.
Five, okay.
Plus the north end of this will have, is proposed to have some sewer up there on main to get back to the corner lot, so we're still working with them on a easement to get that, so there'll be service from that too.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? I guess I'm, I'm alright with this one, so.
Perfect sense.
Alright, so they'll entertain a motion then to uh.
Motion, so moved.
Okay, Brian does one.
Second.
Dave does a second, okay. Um, we'll roll call it, being we're spending money. Dave?
Yes.
Brian?
The answer.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Alright, we'll get that done then.
So the, the funds, would this would go into, this, these are the attitude of existing specials, this would not come out of the contingency, correct?
This would come out of the contingency for that project.
Yeah, this would be out of the contingency, Brian.
For that project.
Well, it would come out of the contingency.
Yep.
Okay.
But remember, we're assessing this at the end.
Right.
Right, so there's, it's not, the specials haven't been set yet, so it's just, it's in the contingency right now.
Okay.
Alright.
They wanna get the buy somewhere else, so.
Okay, so we'll move on to uh thirteen, you already did twelve.
Okay. I've been quiet tonight, I kinda like this. Um, agenda thirteen is fairly quick. Item is uh special event liquor license application for this Friday. It'd be, the event would be held at the fire hall or that parking lot in the building. Uh, it's for Webbed Feet LLC doing business as Rookery Rock Winery, and it's for them to be able to give samples of wine, sell glasses of wine, and also sell bottles of their wine uh to individuals that would be attending the farmer's market event that we're gonna have, uh, rain or shine. Or snore.
Snow or shine, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're great, we anticipate to have a unique farmer's market, uh, but we're gonna work with what we can. Uh, this individual has asked at the, in talking with him, that the liquor license fee is typically fifty dollars would be waived because with a event like this, you don't know the turnout, especially being the first farmer's market for horse. Um, did not see any issues with that. I did not, like I said, because we're trying to get vendors to come, and we don't know if we're gonna have five people or five hundred people show.
I don't know, was it just samples, or was it actual glasses?
Uh, they did ask to be able to sell glasses of wine and buy the bottle also, so they did ask for that. Um, but we did.
Lucas, don't be crazy over there.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
What, are you worried about the off sale portion?
Yeah.
So.
Well, but that's the whole idea behind the special permit, right?
Well, your, the special permit is typically for someone that's licensed in your city that gets a license to have a special event. I don't know if they're a licensed alcohol distributor.
They do have a license with the state of North Dakota, and they've submitted for a special event permit with the state also.
Because they have to pay already to the state for events and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have the liability insurance, we already have that, so.
Yeah.
And it's not like, you know, it's, it's gonna be a specific drinking event, so it's not like we need to get special police protection for the event, right?
I do have to see it, uh, we could bring it up to the deputies, the plan was to bring it up to Cass County and ask them, now, is somebody around?
The Norfite.
So Ross, Ross is on duty probably, so.
Tell him to call over and drive with the Ross, be sure.
Yeah, but we'd.
Cause like you said, he's done this before at other venues around Cass County, and this is, we're going through the same process that he's gone at other venues.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be talking with the county, this one can give a quicker notice, so.
I mean, I, I would, I would assert that our liability is fairly low, but, you know, having a special permit like this seems like the right thing to do for this kind of event.
Yeah, and this is the only application that we received for the farmer's market.
I mean, I'm okay doing this and waving the feet, just to kinda get this started, so we can have more of these, I'd like to have more vendors from multiple facets come down here and do this kind of thing, so I'd like to encourage this a little bit.
Yeah, we're, and then there's talks of moving everything inside the fair hall, so rain or shine.
We'll make it work.
It doesn't take long to walk through and buy a bunch of stuff.
Alright, so can I get a motion on this one?
Motion approved.
Okay, Brian does a motion to approve.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, so let's let him know that, and then we get a hold of Lori and that's what we'll have to keep Lucas pacified here a little bit too, but. Right, Lucas?
You got her.
Alright, Jim, let's go on to fourteen while Lucas is thinking.
Fourteen, a long awaited engineering slash public work portion.
Best portion of the meeting.
Always, it's got the most color.
Yeah, that's true.
So we'll hit the highlights here. Uh, the SSL depart, SSL department, we had the final inspection with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, formerly the Health Department. On Friday, September twenty-seventh, next Tuesday, just have to finish out some closeout documents. Uh, water meter replacement, same thing, we did the final inspection that day.
So, wait, Jim, Jim, can we go back to that?
Sure.
So item two, so we got the final inspection, does that mean that uh when, is, is there a plan to start sending any sewer in that direction, or what's the plan?
Dr. Britton here, we've been talking about it, but.
We, uh, once we have uh the Lakeview Drive project, once that is all cleared up, uh, then we'll coordinate with Fargo and begin discussion according to time when to start sending sewage. Uh, at that time, we, around that time, I'll be coming back to council to discuss sewer rates. Uh, because we will be paying Fargo, I believe the contract states three dollars per thousand, uh, and we collect one dollar eighty-five cents per thousand. So there's a.
Yeah, there's a little price discrepancy that we're gonna have to work out.
So it's something that we're going to be having to, just before we get to that point, we'll be having a discussion council-wise. Uh, we're going to throttle, you know, how much, control how much sewage we could send to Fargo to make sure we're using our lagoons, but we need to figure out what that sewer rate is going to be, so we'll be able to handle it for a little while, but um it's going to be a challenge at first until we make some adjustments to the rate.
Yep.
So that's why we'll have that discussion before we send that sewage to Fargo. So.
Okay. But I mean, there's, there's no technical reason at this point that we can't begin that now that, now that it's approved.
That one's.
Right. Uh, the, the, the wet well has been raised and coated.
So that's good.
So we should, there should be any technical in the way.
We're, we were having an issue at the wet well along Lakeview Drive by the water tower, and they were having to do some adjustments, type of Lakeview Drive project before.
Getting to it was a challenge too. Imagine that.
Yep.
So. Taking a swamp buggy out there?
Well, the, the water, there's a water tower being constructed out there, roads being constructed out there, a school being constructed out there, and it was um.
Details.
Yeah, getting to it was a bit challenging. There will be, not should, not should be, will be a lot of roads to get there, so.
Alright.
Anyway, so yeah, that's where we're at on that. Uh, water meters.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, water meters, the same final inspection was held uh that same day. They got the final document signed by court, I just have to submit them, and then we'll be done with that. Um, improvement district of those in nineteen four, which is serviced the sixty-fourth avenue. This is being driven by the Horseshoe Bend Trailer Park. And this is gaining some more traction. Project was on hold due to some state revolving fund uh issues with providing the funding for it due to the past audit. Um, the Health Department did notice that the lagoon that they have up there is getting fuller, and that is a single cell lagoon that cannot be discharged, so they are watching that to make sure that it doesn't discharge, so um the trailer court owner has petitioned the city for that service. I did inform the, the Department of Environmental Quality, I sent them the report we had put together, the preliminary costs that we had put together, and the scheduling we had put together. They thanked me for the information, but did real, did emphasize that something will have to be done about that next year, so.
Okay.
Something that we are gonna have to plan for. Uh, plan preparation was underway prior to the uh public finance authority saying slow down on the fin, funding side of it, so um we will need to proceed with that this winter, early, early spring at, at the latest, so.
Think that's something, that's something that's probably gonna have to be taken care of next year.
Uh, yeah, I think, we've been kicking this one for two, three years now, and.
And the lagoon's not going down there, he's adding in more trailers.
Yeah, that's what the Department of Environmental Quality is noticing, is that when they look at Google and they go back and find.
That's what I was thinking too, is why, just, you would think that this would be bumped up in priority if the Department is involved and concerned, right?
And we, and we talked about that, and there was a mutual understanding that it will be more of a priority, yeah.
Yeah, I, it's on the, I think it'll be bet, bet higher on their to-do list, so.
So at this point, the, at this point, the, the, the work is on the state level to get, for approval, correct?
Well, we have to do some stuff locally, and then they have to approve it, but um, no, the work is still at the local level.
Yeah, we gotta do the stuff here first, Brian. We, we started, we just put it on pause because of that other, the issue with about the SRF loans and our audits, so.
Alright.
So now I think we can start moving ahead a little bit, cause I think they see some expediency in having to get that done, so.
Okay, well, that, that's good news.
Uh, Maple Lane, we touched on change order number three. Park and Rec Trails Grand, they took down the trees along Conner Road seventeen. They are, they have already asked me about the potential for an extension. If you haven't noticed, it's rained quite a bit.
They don't wanna play in the snowbanks?
The schedule is not real, the weather forecast is not real promising. Uh, the city is supplying clay to build the embankment for that path. It happens to be adjacent to Lakeview Drive, which is kind of a swamp at the moment, so accessing that clay has been kinda challenging for them, so they're feeling us out as to the potential for an extension. This is funded through Northwater Park and Rec. I have reached out to them to see what the situation is for the funding, if it could be extended or not. That's kinda the governing factor before I would even recommend that any of you guys say.
To, to our new rep again.
Do you see a reason why that wouldn't, that extension wouldn't get approved?
I, I don't know, it all depends on the federal funding and when it has to be spent by, so.
If they've got, if they've got a sunset on it, Brian, where it's gotta be burned or lose it.
Well, that, that's what I'm worried about, so.
Yeah.
And so am I.
What are other options?
So am I, and, and you know, they said that they're committed to, to doing it, it's just, and they will get it done if, if they absolutely have to, but they are looking at the forecast, and I don't want them building embankment on either too wet a material that's just gonna slough, or it's, it's gonna create a, a poor product, and.
Right, it'll just be.
Right along Chestnut, we don't need another one along Chestnut.
Right, exactly.
So um more of an FYI for you, they are working on it. It's uh this, and don't be surprised if in two weeks they come back and maybe push a little harder if we do get this, this weather, so. Um, Terra Gardens, punch list items are ongoing, the private utility installation was uh is almost complete. They turned the lights on as of noon today, from what I was told. Um, and we're doing a final inspection of the lighting and the electrical on Friday. That's kind of the last on that.
So they got lights going in a place that doesn't have anything, that can't get going in the street, but sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't have said that.
You're still a little salty here, Dave.
Well.
For public.
So, is that overlay gonna be done yet this fall for on the Terra Gardens, or no?
The overlay in Prairie View is scheduled for Friday.
Sorry, I meant Prairie View.
The, the uh overlay for Prairie View is scheduled for Friday.
It's scheduled for Friday.
Provided the city plows the street first. Um, I did get a very big weather depending on that. The contractor is out there this, today and tomorrow, removing curb and gutter and replacing curb and gutter that's failed. They hope to have that done here the next, probably by tomorrow. And then Northern Improvement plans on coming in, it's scheduled for Friday for the overlay, that should take a day. Completely weather dependent, I was drilled into my head that it will be weather dependent.
Yeah, we know.
So.
We anticipate next week.
Yeah.
Not gonna hold our breath for Friday.
Right. Uh, Lakeview Drive and Seventy-Ninth, thirty-seven percent complete, all the underground will be complete this week minus some miscellaneous stuff, uh, waiting on a dirt crew to come in and shape up the, the, uh, subgrade and go from there. That one does not get paved this year, so, once we get to the earthwork, we're pretty much done for the year. Seventy-sixth Avenue Roundabout is seventy-nine percent complete, they're working, they will be back on Wednesday to finish out the concrete pours, they've done a couple machine pours, they had to go back to Cheyenne and finish up a couple things up there and then they're gonna come back here on Wednesday is what, and pour on Wednesday. Uh, let's see, Sixty-third Street, thirty-seven point one percent complete, there's not a lot remaining on that one as far as underground. Club Creek is fifty-seven percent complete, they will have all of the underground in this week. And that was a undertaking, they had multiple underground crews working out there and working hard on it, so far as the underground, they are on schedule, but there's a lot of dirt to move on that job, so that's another one where they've hinted at maybe not quite getting it done this year. Just kind of hinted, not asked or anything like that, but we're not getting a lot of drying the way it is right now. And in order to build the Lomar fill, the letter map revision and the flood areas, you have to have a certain percentage of moisture and a certain compaction and sometime, and it's coming out wet, and with no sun, no warmth, it's not drying, it's not drying, so. That's something that we'll address as we go here, so, and there is really no way around that. If you were, there is moisture specs for the Lomar to get it moved and for the compaction, so it's just not a matter of hogging in there, it's gotta be done appropriately. There is a process to that. Oh, let's see. Last thing I have is Third and Fourth Street Drainage, this is a project we touched on probably about a month ago due to some ongoing resident concerns with drainage along Third and Fourth Streets just east of, of, uh, City Hall here. I put together a set of plans, we sent out quotes to five contractors, I received one pass from Northern Improvement. It is quite a bit more than what I originally had thought when I put the estimate together. Um, originally we had thought, we were looking at about nine thousand dollars for Third Street, bid came in at around seventeen. And for Section Two, which is Fourth Street, I was thinking it'd be closer to twenty thousand and it was thirty-two thousand, so. These little jobs like this are tough to, tough to get a good estimate on. Um, we've been, we, I sent out quotes to FM Asphalt, Northern Improvement, Border States Paving, AJ's Construction and OP Construction. OP Construction is doing the concrete removal and replacement for Northern Improvement on the Prairie View project. Um, AJ's doing the concrete on the shared use path, so they'd be in the area, Northern's doing the paving on, on Prairie View. Um, the ones that I talked to said they couldn't get anyone to commit this time of year to do it. The weather in the past week and, week and month basically has got them behind enough where they didn't feel comfortable taking on more work. Northern was interested in it because they're gonna be here working on the other one, so, um, pricing wise, tough to say if we get a better price if we did it next year, um, we might. I think these are pretty, pretty in line prices, I don't see anything that's really exorbitant.
Would we get a better price if we packaged this with other work that's gonna be happening next year?
We, we kind of did that this year.
Oh, okay.
With the Prairie View and the being that that's the one who happened to submit a quote back, um, and he did call me and say, you know, that is gonna help us bidding on it, you know, that we're, we'll be in the area. Next year, I don't really know what we're, what we're planning as far as having concrete and asphalt.
We, we haven't gone through our projects for next year yet.
So as far as bundling is something, I don't want to bundle it with at the moment.
What, what we're trying to do this year obviously is tackle some of our worst drainage areas to at least get some relief on them, uh, Third and Park, Fourth and Park, uh, and then Chestnut, there are improvements there and those improvements have occurred and are working. So we've already seen quite a bit of relief on the western half of Chestnut, where we had a lot of water pooling. Uh, so that was our, that was kind of our focus, uh, are we gonna have other projects of that nature? Yeah, next year, we, we will. Um, but we're trying to get the biggest ones out of the way, so we don't have that pooling destroying our pavement even more than what we have.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, the city's been getting a lot of reminders that it's holding water, a lot of.
But I mean, you just stated that you're gonna, then. Are we legitimately able to move, we have to make decisions before the one bids, they're even.
Are we going to get a, uh, the question is, are we going to get a bid? Do we think that we're going to get a bid becoming more favorable next year to make it work delaying the project out? And that's always hard to say, uh, there's no indications on it, most of this is concrete work. I don't believe concrete has as big of a fluctuation in price, asphalt fluctuates a lot more because of the oil, um.
It's just whether we can even get equipment out there.
And these are, these are, these are small quantities.
Yeah.
That's my side is, is just the timing, even if we go, yes, the weather's not looking good, why, why are we pressing ourselves and we only got one response? Will it knock it in half? I agree with you, no.
Yeah, it's not gonna knock it.
Better if we got a competitive of two or three people.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, if you were to tackle just one, my suggestion would be, if you had to prioritize and you wanted to tackle at least one, I would suggest you tackle Third. That would be the one I would recommend. Fourth, uh, it had more interference with uh, the industrial activity occurring in that area, so it gives more time to work with those businesses.
Third's the worst one.
Third is the worst also, so that's where I'm thinking of, if you were to prioritize just one or the, the other, Third is the one I would tackle first.
Third, was that?
And that was the cheaper one of the two.
Third is the seventeen to four.
Yep.
That's the, that's just, it's the, it's no, no asphalt paving, it's just concrete.
Yeah.
So.
So that, that's the one I would feel more comfortable with.
I'd have to talk to the contractor, see if he can do just one half, or if, you know, he was basing it on doing a bowl, I have to see if he'd be interested in that. Uh, being that they aren't doing the concrete for the Prairie View, they're sub, they subbed it out, he might not be interested in doing that one right now, so.
Yep.
It, it's up to you, that's why we, we brought it forth to you today, it's just, it was more than what we'd originally estimated and we only had the one proposal back.
So being that it's probably, I mean, they're just talking what winter and the conditions this spring, I mean, yeah, there's questions if we can get it done, but are we really worried about how that area is gonna be this spring, if there's a lot of water, I mean, is there any urgency?
This, this spring it held a lot, it held quite a bit of water.
It will hold water, um, Fourth Street would deteriorate more than Third, Third is concrete right now, it's just got some, some low spots in it that are holding water and there's no spillway to keep the water, to allow the water to get off the road. Fourth is asphalt and the asphalt is in rough shape, I mean, there's some spots where the top lift is completely deteriorated away and um, you can probably catch it for the winter, but it's gonna sit with water in it and probably ice.
Yeah.
So Jimmy, to total, those combined would be how much?
About fifty grand.
Fifty?
Well, just under fifty, it's forty-nine, two hundred something.
These dollars come from then, the highway fund?
What was originally purp- proposed, I believe was the sales tax fund on that one too. We're trying to chip away, like I said before, of not just big projects, to tackle some of the smaller ones, so.
Thoughts, guys?
My only side is, uh, I'd want a commitment and writing, if we're gonna tackle it this year, he can get it done this year, he's not gonna come back and ask for an extension. I'm gonna spend the money now, I want him to get it done this year.
Do you make a tentative award to continue to find that we get something from them? It's up to you if we'll do that.
Otherwise, if he's not confident, I'm not one to spend the money.
If he's not comfortable, he's gonna be able to get it done, I think too, we should just wait, I mean, otherwise.
Typically your concrete work, you have a lot bigger window than asphalt, so Third is more, pretty much all concrete.
Third is all.
Third is all con- and then Fourth is some.
Uh, Fourth, the concrete isn't as much, it's more being fixed that spot where the road's deteriorated.
Yep.
I mean, I guess, I guess, I'm okay doing it, but like, I agree with you, it's gotta be done this year, done otherwise.
Yeah, it doesn't do any good to put it off on next year, then we could have bid it that way.
Right, exactly, so we're done with it.
That's, that's fine, and then he maybe wanna do it Friday, and he's out here. Knock on wood.
It's a nice thought, it's a nice thought. Yeah, no.
Schedule at the same time.
Everybody's gonna be in their house, but Northern Improv's gonna be out doing work in front.
They're committed. They could cover that concrete, it won't be as too bad.
So somebody wanna make?
I make a motion that we accept the bids contingent guarantee that he can get the work done this year.
Okay, I will reach out and get that.
Alright, Dave made a motion, Chelsea made a second. Alright, we'll roll call it, Dave?
Yes.
Bri- Brian?
Did he lose him?
Sorry, I was muted.
He was unmuted.
I, I really had a hard time hearing the conversation. I, yeah, I, 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 I feel what, I'm actually gonna abstain because I couldn't hear the conversation.
Fair enough. Okay, so, um, what this came down to, Brian, is that we're going to the, the, uh, work, or the repair work they were planning to do over on Third and Fourth Streets.
Yep.
They came in with a bid, and with the bid was about twice as much as what we were debating roughly.
Yeah.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, putting a motion together to approve it contingent upon they can get it done this year. Um, if they can't.
That's a crapshoot.
It is, it is, but that's what we'll, being they gave us a bid, that's what we figured we would do.
So that if they can't get it done, if we, what if they get it halfway done?
No, no, they gotta, they gotta give us some writing that they're gonna get it done, one way or the other, and if they're not comfortable enough to do that, then we delay it till next year.
Yeah, I think that's what we have to do.
We rebid it next year.
Re-rebid it, sorry.
Re-bid it, yeah.
Thank you for clarification.
Okay, alright, I'll approve then.
Okay, and Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, Jim, so do that and let's see what we can come up with on that.
Anybody else have anything for me? I gotta run another meeting here quick, so.
And, and that, that, we, we would fund that out of the highway fund, right?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
We're looking at sales tax right now.
Okay, great.
I got it and nothing else. You got any questions for Jim, Brian?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Alright, Matt, you're up.
I'm on the diversion, the, the FN diversion's gonna have a park system, I'm on the steering committee for developing the plan for that park system. Uh, we had consultants in town last week, spent two days with consultants from various firms and places. Um, it's a very encouraging project, a big portion of the version goes through Horace, so there's gonna be additional park opportunities and open space opportunities in Horace, um, that will be the responsibility for diversion. And so, it's important that the city remains engaged through this process, um, so the city can, you know, the parks and, and the amenities that go in there and serve, you know, the citizens of Horace is part of the larger project. Uh, electives will be engaged in the development of this plan, just not yet, we're still at the very beginning stages of it. That was really my big update, uh, the approval of ordinance twenty-nine-two dash seven today, I think is a really big step forward in cleaning up our development code. Uh, we've held a lot of developments at the gate until the PUD ordinance was approved by the public. Um, this new PUD ordinance will give the, the city and the public a control they need up front to, you know, make sure that these projects are scoped properly. Um, and they're not drawn and then asked to be zoned PUD, that, that, this, this requires more engagement up front than normal and that's a big deal, so.
Have a question.
Yep.
So with the block length on, like on Southdale Farms, you added like a pedestrian access?
Mm-hmm.
Because the block length wasn't to code?
Correct.
So, is that an easy way out of, of meeting the block length?
I think it's a solution to the block length, the purpose of a block length is, well, there's two purposes. One of them is to, in, in, the request to change the block length came from, how do we find ways to diversify our housing stock? Well, a immediate first step is to change how people, when you're walking through a neighborhood, where, where you go, what it looks like from the human scale perspective. Requiring the developer to, you know, develop more roadways within it and develop a more urban scale development is an important step. It helps to raise some of the garage grove effects. Um, the second thing is to help create options for people to walk, for people to move and, um, the, you know, the, the, the walkways in the middle of the blocks and how the city's counted that as a break in the block. Um, I, I, that's the purpose of the block length, any ways to, to create more ways for people to engage their neighbors. And that's the purpose of block length ordinance. Um, wh- is the, the reason why we've allowed for what you saw today is because that's what all the other, as the other community, other municipalities are upgrading the block length ordinance, that's what they've allowed. Um, so, we're not interested, I'm not interested in, in, you know, completely turning everything over on its head, I don't think anybody gets, you know, the community doesn't get what they are asking for, like just turning the process over on its head. But this is an important step towards, um, developing then some broader policy to say, oh, when can block length be the right of way street and when can it be the right of way crosswalk?
Like if somebody wanted to double the block length and put a pedestrian access down the center?
Yeah, but then we have some ability to say, well, if that's, that, that's what I mean, the next step is the policy is, well then, what are the requirements of the mid-block crossing? And then, you know, we'll enter into discussion, so.
Chelsea, I'm over your shaking my head, no, she'll bank it in.
And we have a planning permission, they can say no.
As long as Russ is there, he'll keep that control over.
No, there's a process to when you're up modernizing really an old zoning, I mean, our zoning code was built to protect that one, that's how it was built. And I think the reality as a marketer is that that's not what Horace is gonna, that's, Horace is becoming something in addition to that. And it's, it's a step-by-step process, so we just turn it over on its head, you know, then the development community can't develop. Um, and then you enter the public into a whole range of issues that we shouldn't walk them into, in my opinion, so.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, Russ, go ahead.
Paces went further than I even dreamed we could go on Southdale.
All good, right?
All good.
All good, yep, exactly.
Yeah, we have to set the precedence.
That's what we wanna do, that's, that's the whole point here. It's updating all these, I'll call them old ordinances that have been around for a long time, but they're not gonna be current with what's going on, so.
I think there's a lot of just lower expectations because we're an old, you know, we're a small town, an older town and so working on raising the expectation.
Get somebody to ramrod this stuff through, who's got time to spend on it, you know, that's, that's what we needed, so appreciate that, Matt, for getting that squared away. Anything else?
Right. I have a handful of items, so.
You got five minutes.
I'll go quick.
Keep it short.
I'll go quick. Uh, say your year signs, they have been ordered, uh, at League of Cities, we're honored to say a year. Obviously, price off posts, all that, if you weren't able to attend. Uh, don't know exactly when we'll be getting those signs, but when we do, we'll put them up, order, uh, one extra and then we'll put one north end, south end and then east end of town, so just a heads up on that. Uh, Cass County Vector, our final bill from them, now keep in mind, we did a little extra, getting into our ET a little bit for coverage. Uh, final bill came fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars, seventy-eight cents, uh, not bad, given that typically we would have, we would have higher numbers of mosquitoes, obviously we're an issue over the summer. But when you look at our neighboring communities, Fargo, West Fargo, Morehead, and even the small towns, even when we are at our highest number, there are always other areas that were significantly higher than us for readings. Uh, I believe our, one of our highest readings was around, uh, two hundred, two hundred fifty mosquitoes per trap count at times when Fargo or one of these other commu- some of these other communities would be dipping nine hundred to a thousand mosquitoes. So, uh, that was one, item two, that Ben Prather complimented Horace on was how aggressive nature on mosquito control. We did that one last spring about a week and a half ago, I don't foresee us having to do any more applications the rest of the year.
I hope so.
Knock on wood. Uh, municipal judge, uh, Jessica Sheminski, she's in place, she's going through her training uh, through the North Dakota, uh, courts. Uh, she has to go through like a mentorship, just seeing, observing municipal courts for so many hours and has a complete orientation program, once those are done, uh, we'll be able to hold municipal court. So that we'll have a lot stronger enforcement of different ordinances through Cass County Sheriff's Department, Russ is looking forward to it. Uh, we are also looking to, checking to make sure like our citation books and everything are, uh, adequate and we're working with the county on that part too. So, to make sure we have all our paperwork and things as much up to par, ready to go as we need to. Hopefully, we don't ever have to use them, but reality is, we'll have to at times. Uh, we've had, uh, issues with on-street parking overnight, and also in no parking zones, especially in areas being developed. Uh, that's, that has paid attention to a little harder, just 'cause, uh, there are some areas, for example, like Gloucester, where you can't even drive through at times, because folks will be parking no parking zones and, uh, just wherever they want to. So we're looking, or working on that. City is participating in the trunk-or-treat event, I believe it's October thirtieth, so be participating in that. Uh, shut-offs, this is a bigger deal for the city. Um, as you know, we incorporated late fees, we're trying to get folks to get current with their accounts for water, sewer, trash, all those. Um, those, uh, individuals that are subject to shut-off have received a notice today, put on their door, and tomorrow, if they don't have their water bills paid, they'll be shut off. There is a fifty-dollar reconnection fee also. So we've had just a handful of properties that are subject to that, but we've had some utility bills in excess of five hundred dollars that it's time for them to get current, so they can, uh, continue to get that ser-, get the utility services, so we're working, addressing that. Uh, since we've incorporated late fee, I would like to have some statistics, and hopefully we'll have some for you at upcoming meeting. Uh, but to show the amount of delinquency that we've had has dropped drastically. Uh, Wendy has been doing a great job of actually contacting individuals where we have phone numbers, so some folks have provided phone numbers. So even just calling up, saying, hey, just a reminder, you got a utility bill, let's do. And trying to get folks set up for ACH automatic payments, or they could pay for it over the phone, whatever needs to be done. And we've been trying to, we have been making progress in that, getting folks current on their utility bills, so. That stacked, when we first incorporated late fee, was about an inch and a half, two-inch thick stack paper per note, utility bills, now it's down to about, you know, quarter inch thick, if that, so, that's great news.
Mm-huh.
And by having trash collected monthly basis for everybody, that revenue stabilized, so we know where our issues are with our utility bills. For each utility, trash, water, sewer, it'll help make out projections a lot easier. Um, and also help with cash flow. And then the last one I had, we'll be talking about this at a future council meeting, but save the date, I'll send a copy of the flyer from League of Cities, November twelfth, you know, the evening of, so at six-thirty at NDSU. Or, you know, the other meeting is November thirteenth at eight-thirty in the morning at NDSU, and it is a Legacy Fund Earnings Committee meeting. And they'll be talking about Legacy Fund earnings and what can be done with those funds. It's, uh, they're doing three or four of these public meetings across the state. Two alone will be in Bismarck, obviously, and one, or those two in Fargo here, and then they'll do one in the western half of the state, is my understanding. But this is our opportunity to express concerns and challenges that city at, or cities are experiencing, like Horace, when it comes to Legacy Fund and how it could be used. Um, during the last legislative session, the low-interest loan program, basically, the, the complementing bill to the Prairie Dog Fund was not approved. Prairie Dog was, but this wasn't it, wasn't, and that was being a two percent low-interest loan for infrastructure projects, like road projects and ones that aren't eligible for different programs like SRF. So, this would make it to where cities could apply for funding a two percent loan for doing a road project, and it would help complement the Prairie Dog Fund, but like I said, it wasn't approved, and it's gonna be a priority with League of Cities likely at the next legislative session. But the time to start talking about it is very soon, because it's gonna take a while for, uh, legislators to make proposed bills and decide where their priorities are. Uh, but this is a meeting called by Representative Pollard, who's the, uh, House Chair, and him and a handful of other, uh, Legacy Fund Earnings Committee members will likely be there to hear feedback along with other staff members from the state, to hear feedback from the public and the communities, select officials, staff, everybody, on what our concerns are. We'll talk about it more as I hear more information from League of Cities, but I wanted to give you a heads up, so you at least know about it beforehand, so you, or, so you can put it on the calendar if you're interested to, interested in attending.
Okay, that's, that's it?
Yep, that's all I had. Five minutes, right?
Yeah, it works. For full report, so just kinda go through, uh, you mentioned City of the Year, we did earn that here, and that was kinda cool, glad you were able to. Brian, I know you're listening, I'm glad you were able to be there and accept it, and thanks for putting together the paperwork too, by the way.
Yeah, it was quite a surprise that, uh, that you got selected, that was a pretty cool recognition.
No, I like that. I'm glad Chelsea and, uh, Brent were able to get there too, so you guys were able to stand up front and get some pictures taken, right?
Yep.
All right, just a couple other things here. Uh, Brian and I attended the Western Governor Association meeting here last Tuesday. Um, got to talk to Doug, or Brian, got to talk to Doug for a little bit, um, got to kinda work the room with a few other people. Um, we're gonna try and get some more conversation with, uh, the governor's office on some of these issues that we've been talking about. I don't know, we'll have to follow up on that, Brian, but, uh, you know, try and get him out here soon, and we can start some of these conversations we've been talking about for a while.
Good, good to hear, we did get, get a new connection, that's his kind of personal handler or communications person, Jace. Uh, forgot his last name now, but, uh, we did meet him, a young kid that, uh, is, is working with Doug, maybe his communication person, so we'll be able to work with him to get something arranged. And we did meet with the North Dakota DOT Director, uh, he is new, like, literally within a month of a job. Uh, I invited him, and he was very interested in coming on the board and, and talk through some of the southwest transportation issues, and, and talk through some of our transportation challenges, so that was good. We're extending an invitation out to him to, to get something scheduled soon.
Yep. The other person I ran into is one of the guys from Emerging Prairie, who is working on this, uh, I believe they call it the Grand Farm Project, which is right east of here, which is trying to do an automated farming system. Um, we're gonna try and get him out here and do a presentation, so everybody kinda can get a handle on what that is all involved, because that is a whole, um, scheme that they're putting together to do a fully automated farming facility. And they're gonna be doing a lot of experimenting and things there, so. Uh, Emerging Prairie is one of those, uh, firms that's really into the entrepreneurship thing, uh, pretty good group to work with, and I'm kinda looking forward to this. So we're gonna get him to come on here and give a presentation. I don't know when yet, but I will get him out here. Um, in case everybody hasn't noticed, we got new logos. There's, and if you haven't seen it on the, on our Facebook site yet, or on our city page, take a look, because that's our new logo. Get some shirts, some cards, and things like that, that you'll be starting to see more of. Um, Economic Development Committee got together here last week, and we're still moving forward with some things on there. There's a lot of stuff to go over. So Matt got put together, um, I can't think of the fellow's name again, but was here talking.
Brian Karnowski.
Yep, talking about the new, uh, some of the new buildings that'll be going up around town here, so, that was kinda nice. Um, that's all I got. John, you're out. Dave, what do you got?
I don't have anything.
Brian, you got anything?
Nope, nothing new, nothing additional.
That leaves it to you, Chelsea.
Not, not really, we're.
No?
I'm working with Shelby, she's great, she's kinda, she's been working hard to get people out to this farmer's market.
Yep.
And I'm excited to see what she can do.
Keep the promos going.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, that pop-up market is getting a lot of attention, so that's, that's great work on that.
Yep, that's what I keep thinking, promote it here almost daily through the week here, and just, so it keeps getting out there.
It's, it's gonna be fun, and I'm surprised, I'm, I'm not surprised, but it's just that cool how much, you know, response we're getting for this kind of event, so hopefully the weather holds and isn't a snowstorm.
Exactly.
It'll be the first of many to, for next year, I think, so.
All right, anything else, otherwise I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Dave?
Second.
Chelsea? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we're done. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you later, Brian, thanks.
Bye.